You see on the bill resolution, we have one of the driveway acquisition payments. There's four properties we're acquiring right away on this. That's the first of four that agreed. The second one they tell me is they're just waiting on the signed document. The other two, they haven't had much luck contacting them. So I gave them some phone numbers that we had. The CDVG money, so counting the commitment letter they requested. Still looking for additional dollars on that. Once we know, once the engineering is complete, we'll have a final estimate on that. So I know then what exactly to go after to commit to. Next thing, as you can see, we've got wires dangling and new equipment installed here for our audio video system. Pretty much everything's in. There was one more component that goes in the box back there. We need to get power to the camera and go through some training. Hopefully we up and rolling.
Next meeting.
Maybe. The new hires both accepted their positions. Tyler's going to be starting at the street department on July 5th. Brian, the utility department on July 1st. We're welcoming them in. The big one, the storm recap. I wanted to send a huge thank you to all of our street department employees, utility department, police department. Everybody that was a part of that initial and ongoing response did a great job. We do have, the rest of this week, we're going to be cleaning up any storm debris that's put out at the curb. That'll be ending this Friday. After that, Kimball will take cut up debris. If it fits in the can, they'll take it. Beyond that, I, we really don't have anywhere else to put things. We're kind of scrounging for places to put things ourselves. Here again, it's where it'd be nice to have a big composting facility somewhere, but we just simply don't have it. So I apologize, but I really don't have many options to offer residents on where to take things at this point. Talk, talk to your friends and neighbors and see if they have somewhere to put things. As far as property damage of our own, the auxiliary building has a tree laying on it. We, we don't think it's too significant, but until the tree is removed completely, we won't know what the roof condition is. It had off the AC unit off one of the mounts, kind of twisted it. Andy was able to put, get that cut out and put back in and seems to be working fine. The railroad lift station down along the trail had a tree laying on it. The fence is pretty much demolished. And then our upstairs HVAC was hit by lightning overnight at some point. So clients has replaced that. As far as we know, so far, that's the only damage we have to our own facilities. So I, I think we're pretty fortunate, assuming the roof hasn't been bad shape out of the auxiliary building. We've not seen evidence of that. I am working, Jason from the county EMA, Jason Troy. He sent out the forms we need to complete for, to file with Ohio EMA for any potential assistance with the storm cleanup. So all the work that was done that night and the ongoing cleanup work is eligible. That'll all be compiled, sent to the state. If funding is available and we completed our forms right, we would be eligible for some assistance on that. So hopefully that comes through. The last thing I have, HDM, I've got thunder coming up on Saturday. Thunder over County. They've requested to close South Monroe Street and Court Street. South Monroe would be from Jackson to Adams. And then all Court Street, one to nine on Saturday. We would need a motion on that.
I'll make that mention.
Second, Khan.
You said one to nine.
One to nine.
Home, five, Khan.
Aye.
Bob Sutter.
Aye.
Vaughn. Hoffy.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye. I also want to thank the street department for the cleanup. I know at my house alone, they took out three dump truck loads and two were checked from one tree.
It's been an incredible amount of debris. And we were fortunate here, I believe, you know, if you go further north, it was far worse.
I, I would echo what, what Bob said, because I ended up calling Pat on something that happened in front of my street. And he was on vacation, but I would have never known it. By the way, we were communicating, told me later, sending Andy out to look at things. And Andy took care of everything that he could have at the time. Just the response and everything was, was quick, was professional. I appreciated the follow up on that. So yeah, Pat was on vacation and I felt bad for bothering him and he just took it in stride. And, and I just, I appreciated the way he handled that, so. Andrew, I appreciate you coming out.
I also wanted to say, I think a lot of potential headaches were avoided, take back with the last handful of years. The amount of trees that we've taken out that were drastically overdrun. I think that's a.
Yeah, my husband and I said, we would have had two trees right on top of our house. It, yeah.
I, I think that saves us.
A lot.
A lot. I believe that's all I had. Thank you.
You might have any questions for me before he goes?
Actually, we're a little bit.
I had one question. The hang baskets look foreign.
Yes.
Like beyond foreign.
Yeah, grasshopper, got a hold of a grasshopper last week.
And the week before last.
So they took one, they noted, I mean, they're aware to, they took one of the baskets to the OSU plant pathology lab in Columbus. To see what's going on. They thought, they almost thought it was just a watering issue. But the more Kim and Char, not Char, Sarah, their son.
Okay.
Chad. Thank you. I think with them looking at it, it didn't make sense for what they were seeing. So they took them down, took one down to see if there's something else going on. They gave us some options. Karen might have talked yet about that. Yeah, we're obviously know there's a problem. I think it kind of seemed like it started with the ones here at the office and then it drifted up. It was strange. They just looked dead. Very strange because the last, our main unit, I think they had done really well. But yeah, they're working on it.
Thank you. All right, thank you for allowing us to rearrange. So can you have a visit with West Coast Council seat?
Yes, you do. I need to say who I am or does everybody know me for the record.
For the record.
Andrew Calaw. I said I wouldn't come back, but I did. So, um, so I'm here. I got kind of caught up in the emotional of dog stabbing that happened last week. And as I watched what was happening on the social media sites about people's concerns about the village and policing and other things that people have seen, I wanted to address the council. First, I want to say that I had called Chief Shanner a few weeks prior to this about some concerns that were brought to my attention. My son is an employee of Dollar General and I've kind of become a member of that family because of that. And so I was hearing some of the things that were happening down there concerning the response by the, the police. I tried to do this in a way that, you know, it's a funny thing. Everybody will get on the social media and say they're going to do this and it's always me that shows up. And I don't, even I get nervous and I've been here how many times and I, I shouldn't feel this way, but I can't explain why. But I will say this, Chief Shanner was very respectful to me, listened to me when I addressed my concerns differently than I've been treated by other people. He was, he listened, he was respectful, wasn't condescending and wanted to hear what I had to say. And he ended it by saying that people need to call, 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 call the police. That's fine, but I found out that call, 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 calling the police isn't solving the problem. Um, I have, obviously my husband's a defense attorney. I am privy to things. I cannot give names, I cannot give circumstances, but I can tell you that in one particular situation, my husband has a client who has reported something to Captain Ken Harmon. He has, from my understanding, based on this client talking to the victim's advocate, a report has not been sent to the prosecutor's office. My husband today is researching something of a case he has. She retained Jeff because when she told what happened, he wanted her to take a lie detector test. Very concerning. And my husband printed off this polygraph, this is off the attorney general's office, that law enforcement and prosecutors cannot request or require a victim of a sex crime to undergo a polygraph examination as a condition of beginning or continuing an investigation. So there's some civil rights issues that might be there, just saying. So I, the mayor, so I was able to contact, I just want to say that there are people that I'm comfortable with talking to in this body. One of them is Kelly Hoffy, one of them is Bob Shoemaker and Brad Khan. I, I felt that I could come to them and they would listen and they protrude to their. And then I happened to run into the mayor at Rhodes. And he listened. And not only did you listen, you kept your word to me and I appreciate that. And I'm gonna, and I mean that. Um, so I think he's going to address the Dollar Gen, I think that he's doing his own thing. I don't know what he's doing. I'm also friends with Tracy Byland, who manages the Dollar Tree. And she has her own situations to tell you about her involvement with the police department. And these may be things that Chief Shanner doesn't even know about. So that's why I, I, I think this needs. COVID was quite something, wasn't it? So for two years, we're going to protect the public from a virus, but we are not going to take people into the jail. And I can tell you that's verbatim. In fact, my husband wanted me to go ahead and bring an example of, and I cannot give names, but police department did an investigation on 2/15/22 and I'll read you a part of the narrative. I then transported him to the Holmes County Jail where they advised that they would only accept it if he was going to be released on his own recognizance bond. Do you know how many times I see that? Because they don't want COVID in the jail. So another issue may be that you may want to bring Richard Hawn in here to explain about how they're still not taking people into the jail of COVID. There are warrants out there all over the place. My husband has clients that have active warrants that we all see him out and about and the jail's not taking them. So I guess here's my, my last couple things. So then I was able to, and I'm assuming that, I was able to get a copy of the police department's two 2021 annual report. And I think I brought it to the attention of the mayor, Kelly, Bob and Brad. And you go through and so you're going to compare arrests, calls, I'm assuming you guys all look at them when you get them. There should have been some concerns. The real killing point, the real thing that concerned me was when you compare breakdown of arrests for the year 2021 with comparison years. And in 2018, there were 246 speeding tickets issued. And you compare that to 2021, which was just this last year, there were two. Now I live at Grand Central Station. I can tell you there are not less speeding. And I do not, I, I've heard, well, we don't want to be a village that is a moneymaker thing. This is about safety. This is about safety. The law library, if you don't really understand it, is funded by fines and costs and things. So I know that the law library has seen, and I had known that already as a citizen. So there will be talking points, I'm not going to debate. I, I really not. I'm here because the talking point of, oh, we're trying to hire. We're trying to get people here. That, I understand there's people that don't want to work. There's a big banner at Goodwill that says, you know, we're hiring. You go into Walmart and there's two people working and they say they can't hire. This is, this is our town. This is our village. The economy is getting worse. Crime rate's going to go up. That's a simple, that's a historic. This is going to get worse. This county is no different than when you're polling nationally. The three things that people are concerned about and what to think about when they're going to go and vote this year is going to be inflation, the gas prices and climate. So we've got to figure it out. It can't be that we can't keep the people we hire. It can't be, um, we can't recruit. Figure it out. I'm begging you, because I think it's going to get worse. And when we got juveniles walking around this town thinking it's okay to have knives and stab a dog, and I don't believe it was self-defense, there's people walking there, but we, people certainly, I'm a little afraid to walk my dogs at night. Because I see, Jeff and I walk every night and there are a lot of people out and about. There's a lot more homeless than this, than we realize. And I do not, I do not feel as safe here. So it just can't be throw your hands up. And I'm begging you for this community, you, you're going to have to figure out how to make us safer. And, and then, that's all I have to say, that I didn't invite Tracy to come because I assured her that she would be treated respectfully and that you listened to her.
Hi, I'm Tracy from Dollar Tree. As a concern, the day the storm went through, the electric went out. I had a homeless guy try to break the window in. Cop come, don't even just go on. He goes over Pizza Hut. The cop goes over to the parking lot. They, I called them, they chase him off. He goes over to the bank to lace in the yard and takes his clothes off. Nothing was done. Later on that night, I was in there taking all of the food out and they said they arrested him. They took him up to Worcester and dropped him off. He's back. He comes in my story, wears a mask, walks up with a knife, acts like he's going to rob us. Nothing's getting done. I carry a taser. All of my employees has a taser now because we don't feel safe at all. I've had a guy come in and grab one of my managers and tried to kiss her. He's known as a sex offender. Herman told me he was known to do this and he was just told not to come back. He physically assaulted her and it was showed on camera. So I don't feel safe. And I live behind Dollar General. I watch drugs get thrown in their dumpster and people come in and dive in it. They know it, so.
That's terrible, in my opinion. That is unacceptable, in my opinion. You should not feel unsafe in the village of Millersburg.
Yeah, while one, he was breaking in the window, it took him 10 minutes to get there. And I told him he was beaten on the window, tried to break in, so. But I got a taser now. I'll protect myself.
But it's sad that it has to come to that. My dog was yelping in the backyard before I came in here tonight and I told my husband to go get the gun. How sad is that? That I have to tell my husband to go get a gun because my dog is yelping? Because I don't know who's out there, I don't know what they're doing.
Yeah.
That's terrible.
It is. It is, and they see it. I mean, like I said, they were sitting in the parking lot and Kai was taking his clothes off. Everybody else was driving by like, whoa. We watched it. But take him, drop him off? He's from Worcester, Worcester brings him here? That's not right. And we shouldn't take him up to Worcester and drop him off. It sounds like he needs help. Instead of getting help, we're dropping him off.
It can't just be Dollar Tree, Dollar General.
I mean, the reason why they picked him up is because he started break, trying to break in all the places down there. Walmart's chased him off, nothing's getting done. And like I said, he's back now. I don't even walk trail no more. Too much going on. But that situation, I don't, you know, like I said, I might get in trouble for carrying a taser, but you know. I got to protect myself.
You do what you gotta do.
Better than a gun. You know, he can, they can take the gun from me, so I prefer the taser, so.
I've had a couple of gentlemen in town contact me and say, we need to form a neighborhood watch in our neighborhood. Millersburg is not that big. It doesn't take very long to get from one end to town to the other unless it's three o'clock in the afternoon. We have a police force.
I used to live in Gushawton, I feel more safer in Gushawton.
Their sheriff deputy steps up to the plate.
I had a discussion with Matt this past week about the officers going into the residential area, patrolling more, not sitting in the four spots that every single person in town knows exactly where they sit. And he said he had a discussion with some of the officers because there, there, there's no presence in the residential area, which is why kids think it's okay to stab a dog or two dogs. But there needs to be daily patrols. And that and I had a discussion about that, that he had a discussion with, with some of his officers, which is good because we need more presence.
I think one of, one of the things when I hear the instance you're referring to, Dollar Tree, is, I guess my first, you know, it's sad to hear all that, but I, I guess my, the message I want to convey is that if you see things that you're not comfortable with, or if there's any illegal activity, I hope that you'll call and I hope that you. You call the police department. And if, if you have to call them 30 minutes later for something else, that's what they're there for. I hope that that's something that you or others should follow up on because that's, that's unacceptable with the kind of behavior that you're, you're talking about. And to piggyback a little bit on what Kelly is saying, I'm a firm believer in community policing. I think community policing is very important. I don't know how much of it is actually instilled in with the officers. But yeah, instead of, you know, sitting in a vehicle, you have to get out of the vehicle, walk around and, you know, police the area on foot. You know, you go down to the park, you see some kids shooting basketball, you don't have any backed up calls or anything and you're not working on an investigation, get out, shoot a couple hoops with the kids. Something like that, I think is really important. Andrew did share with me the annual report numbers. And I have to admit, I, I had not really carefully observed them like I did after she showed them to me. But it was concerning that in 2018, the speeding tickets for that year were 246. And then it plummeted in 2019 to 109 speeding tickets. 2020, it was 10 speeding tickets. And in 2021, there were two speeding tickets. I don't understand that.
The one thing I would like to point out, so I had in the COVID pandemic.
Not 2020.
At that time.
There's drag racing going on during the COVID pandemic.
What I'm saying is.
I don't want to hear that.
To, to catch some kids' drag racing is a whole different sport.
I don't want to hear that.
You know, as you know, as a nation, it was social distance, cover up, stay safe. You know, I'm not saying that, you know, patrolling, of course, will always deter. But I don't know, is it fair to ask our officers to get on a car at the height of this thing and approach someone at a very close distance, handle, you know, IDs, insurance cards and that at the same time?
The governor lifted the stuff in June of 2021. So you still have six. That, that government though saying the coronavirus is the reason, didn't, didn't keep, didn't keep us safe. They wore masks, I see body cams. They were, you can put them back, you're writing a ticket. You're outside, they're inside. I, you cannot defend that.
I know, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making an observation. And like, she and I have talked, you know, since last week, we've talked, we've talked again this evening before this meeting. And I believe, you know, some changes will be coming.
I hope so.
One, one other factor that goes with that. I, I was curious about that big drop in the speeding tickets too. And I had asked Chief Shanner. And Matt, would you mind sharing what you said about the certifications that you had told me when I asked?
Two of the officers are not here anymore, didn't have certification around radar laser. And I was not able to, Connor Bailey, I had signed him up twice for classes and they got canceled during the COVID time. So I couldn't get him to get certified. And Caleb Bethel never got it and I never got him into a class before he was gone.
So that has nothing to do with COVID.
But, but it still seems out of 365 days in a year, out of what, three shifts a day, two for a whole year.
Mayor, do you remember me telling you, did you confirm that there were cameras?
Matter of fact, I checked into that. We have never had speeding or the storm in this village. We were running.
You didn't?
We were running a red light.
Greg Hardisty's boy, Mike Hardisty, never got a speeding ticket from the camera thing that was on the thing.
It was, I, I, I verified this through the former chief and I talked to Mr. Hardisty. It was through a, what would you call it, red light? We were doing red light operations and we recorded it by a video.
So you could do that? You could do something like that then? There is something then that gets people running through red lights?
Well, there's.
That would also record people that almost get hit in the crosswalk?
We, we do want to have cameras out of intersections. We never have. I mean, that was the person stationed there, running the equipment.
Oh, so you could do that?
Well, with the change of traffic lights, you can't, the cameras won't pick up the traffic. Lights changing, you get into the color. Something to do with the lights, it won't pick up.
Are our police officers now able to run? Are they able to run whatever equipment is needed to catch speeders currently?
Yes.
Everyone on the road currently?
Yes.
Do you know how many we have so far this year?
How many?
Speeding tickets?
I do not know.
Have we exceeded two so far this year though?
I, my guess is no. I, I don't remember seeing very many speeds come through.
So if you focus on COVID being the primary issue, and I, I'm looking for answers because when I see the sun drop to, I have to ask myself why? I know there's not, but COVID became strong in 2021, correct? So between 2018, 2019, the number of traffic, the number of speeding tickets dropped more than half. So something started happening. Something started happening back in between 2018 and 2019. something started happening back in between 2018 and 2019. 109 cases in 2019 versus 246 in 2018. And I understand numbers are going to fluctuate, I, I get that, but the sudden drop is is pretty amazing. And then it just continues to get worse.
Especially when you sit on your porch and see it. I, I live it. When you see it, yeah.
Chief, did anything change procedurally to affect those numbers? I mean, was there, was that a deliberate?
Other, other, like during the COVID period, or?
Even, even the, the 2019 that, that Brad mentioned, was there anything that changed on?
The only thing that changed was during the COVID period, that was the only time that anything changed.
So you don't know why the numbers dropped so drastically in 2019?
I do not.
And why they're, why we have less than two so far this year?
I do, I do not have any answer for that.
Perhaps we need the officers who are out on the streets coming and talk to us.
If that's what you want, I can arrange it. Might take a few meetings, unless you want me to have everybody on shift in here at the same time.
I just think we need some answers, we need to know. I, I don't want somebody killed, and the third, for that's what it could take. Because all they have to do is, you had two speeding tickets, but you, way more people than two sped in this village in 2021.
That's really not our role, that's his role, not our role through officers in here, that's his role.
If he doesn't know the answer, it becomes our problem.
Well, then we ask him, do you get the answer, and bring that answer forward. It's not appropriate to have officers come in here and face counsel, that's not appropriate. They call it his command, and his command over.
Yeah, I, I, and I, even if it wasn't our role, I wouldn't want to see the officers being brought in here. I'd certainly want you to follow up and ask them, inquire, um, what's going on, so.
With actual answers, I, I want actual answers, I don't want to, well, we don't know, or, well, it's, you know, we're still hesitant because of COVID update, that's not an answer anymore. COVID's going to be around forever. Yeah, just like the flu, it's going to be around forever, it's not a, it's not an excuse anymore. It wasn't an excuse in 19. We need to do things in the village to make people feel safe. That is our job, that is our role as council members, to make sure the people of the village of Millersburg feel safe.
I do.
I'm just saying that that is our role.
Anything else, ladies?
Thank you for your input.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies, I appreciate it.
Do you have any other visits, if this address council? Do you have motion to spend reading the minutes?
Seven.
Second.
Owen, Tom, Pasta, Ron, Con, Coffee, Aye.
Aye.
Any issues or corrections? You have motion passed?
Seven.
Second, Con.
Coffee, Aye, Con?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Von? Pasta?
Aye.
Owen, Aye.
Bill, Will, Lucian, 2022, Day 17, are you questioning the bills this evening? You have a motion to pass?
Shoemaker, aye, so move.
Second.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Von? Owen, Aye, Pasta?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Coffee, Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, just a reminder that we will have the budget here next meeting at 6:40.
Oh. And legislation, let's see. Committee reports. Old business.
I only had a question, since I wasn't here last week when I was reading the minutes. Um, the meeting change kind of caught me off guard, uh, with Nate asking about that, since we had such a lengthy discussion the first of the year, I was wondering, um, what, what was the reason for the change? Anybody?
Short meetings.
Yeah, maybe every ten minutes, a lot of times.
Did we play around with it a little bit, see if it works?
See how it's.
Yeah, for a couple months.
July, August, September?
Three months.
Okay, I just wondered.
New business?
I have Karen on fuel costs, how are we doing as far as, I'm sure we've blown the budget. I told Matt, I don't care, I, I don't care how much, if they're patrolling the village, that's fine, I just wonder.
I worked at PO, I was great at certain POs, I've been with them the year, for the whole year, like telephone, electric, gas, gas, those types of things. And we are real close to running out of that entire PO right now, or how many did I get in June?
That was for how many?
About $35,000.
So.
Not saying that there's still not money that is appropriated that haven't come over yet, but that PO is busy.
Alcohol, yeah.
You know, who knew last December?
Right, yeah, we didn't know.
Yeah, that raises $40,000 in fuel a year, but.
Right. Yeah.
And do you have any business?
Sure, anything we can do, uh, to deal with century link and not maintaining equipment? I mean, we had it very close for eight days, probably would have been close for maybe a few days longer, but I happened to be driving through Benton. On Thursday, I saw they were working on, uh, phone lines in the middle of the fields, I stopped and chatted with the guys. Nobody was out of service, they were fixing a hole in the middle of the farm field, as opposed to coming in and fixing it and opening a road. Now, I didn't mind arriving close, I went out and painted my bail box.
Your postal person will all appreciate that.
But, you know, eight, eight days, and I, I understand when under a storm, that they're fixing, uh, lines down in a farm field, when you have a relatively busy road that closes for three days. And it's not just that, I mean, if you look at their infrastructure around the county, I mean, you have lines down, trees on lines, all over the place, they're just not maintaining anything.
There's nothing I know of, I mean, you could put, uh, pressure on the powers that be. I know that Nate was talking to them, uh, on a regular basis, trying to get your road open. Uh, but I don't know of anything, um, that, you know, that we can do to put pressure on utility, other than political pressure. I've, I've just been noticing the last couple years, how many times you see on Facebook a local business says, our phones aren't working right now. You know, and it might go a couple days where that it's like that, our phones aren't working, and it, and it has to be, because there, so few people have landlines anymore, that, you know, they cut back on the, the amount of maintenance people.
Well, like, uh, you'll, you'd be surprised, just starting off 39, how many trees are laying on phone line, there are that way for once.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah.
I can crush my golf balls.
And just pull out my village's brothers, it looks like a bungee strap is holding it.
The other new business? Any, does anyone have anything else? Get the two for the second.
I asked them if anyone was speaking.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That being said, we have a motion for a gun.
Second.
Owen, Aye. Pasta?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Coffee, Aye.
Aye.